Good morning. It's 8:30, and I'm going to call the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for December 31, 2024 to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Have motion to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. One thing I want to -- on the agenda, we've accepted donations for the Clay County Sheriff's Office K-9 account from Hittodah Area Lions, a very generous donation, Johnson Auto Repair, and Ag Farm Credit also with donations, and we really appreciate the support of our sheriff's department, our K-9 program from these businesses. Okay, next we have citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens here who wish to address an issue that is not on today's agenda? Steve, have we got anybody online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
I'll have approval of paying the bills.
Have motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And next, we have approval of minutes from December 17, 224.
Move to approve.
Have motion to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Sheriff emptying. This is a good issue you're bringing up to us today, and I'll let you take it away and share the good news.
It is. Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Thanks for having me here this morning. I am here this morning to request approval to accept a donation of $40,000 to the Sheriff's Office K-9 program. I was contacted, actually Sergeant Mark was contacted about two months ago, from the daughter of the anonymous donor, kind of explaining a situation to us where they would like to donate this amount of money to the Sheriff's Office K-9 program for future dog, for our program. As you can see from the $40,000, that would cover all costs for the dog, to include vehicle equipment as well. This is a very generous donation. We're very excited and happy that they chose us for this donation, and I think this is definitely a direct result of the work that some of our, all of our deputies do out there when they're talking to people, dealing with people, responding to calls for service or what have you. It shows that our staff is doing the right thing when they're dealing with our community members, and they're very professional in doing so. So this is a great donation to our program, and we're very excited for it.
Well, I think this is a, this is a program I believed in for just about my entire career in law enforcement. I think the first K-9 I saw, I'd been a cop for about three years, and it's effective, it's good for the officer's safety, it's good for our response to the public. One of the things, as much as, as you indicated, our officers earn the respect they get, we have a community that will give it to them when they earn it, and this is a good place to be a law enforcement officer. And this is just one indication. I know whoever it is out there, our anonymous donor, I hope they realize we're grateful for this support. Anybody got any questions or comments?
Also, Mr. Chair, if I may, I would just like to add that throughout the year, we do receive several donations. You've probably seen that on the, you have seen on the consent agenda, I am sure, but there are some businesses out there that just continually donate to us, and that's Farmstead Care, Holly Lions, the Hittodah Lions, Johnson Auto, and we did a sweatshirt fundraiser recently that was very, very well received, along with another raffle. So we've done very well this year in that fund, and it's all because of our community support, and, you know, that's from us going to several things in the summertime as well. We attend a lot of events in the summer.
It's our thanks to the people that are supporting you. Anybody have anything?
Good work to all of you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation.
I'll second the motion.
I'd have motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Steve Larson, Tony Steenolfson, and Carl Klinggartner of Red River Communications are going to join us here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're going to keep the exciting news moving here this morning. I don't want to steal any thunder. Tom and Kerry here look familiar to you. They've been before this commission several times over the last few years through Red River Communications and working hard to get broadband into different parts of Clay County. And so they have been working hard through different grant processes, and we've had several conversations, both at this board and in committee, about all the great work that they're doing. And so because they've worked so hard, I don't want to steal any of their thunder, and so I'll turn it over to Tom and Kerry.
I'll let Tom start.
Well, first of all, good morning, and thank you for allowing us some time on the agenda, and Happy New Year to all of you. Yes, we're here. We have no requests today. We just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Red River Communications has been awarded a USDA Reconnect Grant. If you remember, we have been in front of you at different times asking for your support on different grants. This is a federal grant, and it was applied for in early 2024. There was also a state grant, a border-to-border grant that we had applied for, and there was a financial commitment out of this commission. That grant, we were turned down on, and this is the federal grant, there is no financial obligation of the county. We just wanted to clarify that. I believe we had sent a file with, with kind of the geographical area of the grant. Are you guys all able to see that?
Yeah.
That is, that is the grant area. That is clearly an area of Clay County that we believe, and I know you all know, as one of your representatives there, is in that area, and there is clearly a lack of broadband. So this grant is to bring fiber optic broadband to those, it's nearly 200 locations. There's lots of different statistics. You may see some press releases that will have populations and different things like that. It's roughly about 200 locations. As I indicated, it is a federal grant, so there is a lot of, you know, for lack of a better term, red tape and some different things we're working our way through. We anticipate being able to do the construction in 2026. So we'll be out there this year. We'll keep you apprised and different things. We'll be working with different members of your team and so on and so forth for right of way and different things like that. But really, there was no request today. You may see some, some press releases hitting, hitting the Senators Tina Smith and Senator Amy Klobuchar has put out their own releases, and the Fargo Forum is going to be working on one as well. So we really wanted to make it informative here and open ourselves up to any questions that you all may have.
Questions?
Questions? Commissioner Crayoff.
So starting now, congratulations. I do, what is, what sort of your timeline on for this type of project?
It's a very good question. We anticipate being able to do the construction in 2026, and if we can make things come together the way we hope, we could complete most of the project in 2026 construction season. And then, of course, after the construction season, there's a process of getting things spliced up and getting people hooked up. That is the best-case scenario. I would be able to look at you, anticipate completion in 2027.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and a lot of the engineering, a lot of the behind-the-scenes work happened this year, the 20, in 2025. So our team has actually already started a lot of the background work, so, yeah.
And having missed out on the state funding, how does that, what impact does that have, whether it's toward this project or in this area or expanding?
Yeah, good question. So the state of Minnesota has been executing on the border-to-border grants, and I believe that's close to a decade old of those. And, you know, they just, there's only so much money to go around, and unfortunately, our application did not make that, that cut. But I can report that they anticipate that program, as it is structured today, to sunset. There's some other funding mechanisms out there, but we're, we really feel fortunate, both as a company and for rural Clay County, that we were able to get this grant, because we believe some of this funding is going to start sunsetting.
Right, and this is very nice size amount of money, so.
Yes, yes. We're, we're very appreciative. We cannot, we cannot sit here without looking at Mr. Larson to my right and thanking him for the contributions and the coordinations he has done as well, and your letters of support and so on and so forth, and just recognize that we are willing to come here and give you updates and, or keep Mr. Larson apprised of any of the updates or any questions. We intend on only building upon our relationship with you all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm really excited about this. Obviously, as you mentioned, I am always shocked as close to a major metropolitan as some areas in Clay County are, the lack of high-speed internet. So I appreciate a company like Red River Communications working on that. I'm excited about the development that you awarded north of Holly as well. And I just will say, for the commission's standpoint, this company's been really busy with outreach. You'll see them having other open houses in other cities of the county as well, and always exciting when businesses come forward to help address the need as well collaboratively with the government, so I appreciate it.
Very kind, very kind, Commissioner, very kind. I'd be amiss if I did not update as well. Dating back approximately a year, we were awarded a border-to-border grant, like I referenced earlier, for those, for those locations approximately between 50 and 100 locations north of the community of Holly, up there north, several miles there. And we anticipate that construction to take place this construction season approaching.
Yeah.
So that's another update there. And, you know, we continue to just work to make sure the people in Clay County have the broadband needs they, they need to be able to, to interact in society. You know, as Commissioner Mojo has indicated, obviously she lives in the area where the grant, this is very important for education. You know, there's part people in the Morehead School District that do not have the broadband that allow them to keep up with their counterparts that are within city limits.
We're really excited for the economic development angle of bringing fiber to these areas, too. We just see so much potential for growth in that area, and we're really excited for you guys as the commissioners to be able to promote some of the rural areas just outside the metro area, just as Jenny said, and she can testament to the great quality of life, the schools, the neighbors, all of that. So we're really excited about this, both in the North Holly and in the, we call it the rural Comstock, rural Saban area.
Any other questions? We appreciate more good news. This is a great way to wrap the year up, and we appreciate the efforts that are going into this, and we know there'll be continual work to get funding through the state. Let us know what we can do to support that.
You will. Thank you.
We thank you, and it would not be possible without the support of you all as well. We recognize that. Thank you. Happy New Year to you all.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, guys.
Next. James O'Donnell, our Director of Juvenile Services. Request for another good news program.
Morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I'm here today to request permission to hire the remaining staff necessary to operate the new transition program. This request was vetted by, vetted by the PEC Committee on December 17, and the request from that committee was to move forward to the full board for consideration. Overall, I'm requesting to hire four additional staff, one case manager at line 17, two juvenile
This is really a great expansion in the program to get women and make it available to them as well, and we need good, trained, competent staff, and it sounds like you've got an excellent plan in mind. Any questions? Not, I'd entertain a motion.
Well, we discussed this at the PEC program, and we felt this is a good way to get it all started out, so hopefully James got it all laid out for us. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, have motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next one, James, you've got a.
Oh, my bad, sorry. Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'm requesting permission to sign the Lakeland contracts. Lakeland does our 30-day evaluations and have for.
James, can you talk closer to your mic?
Oh, sorry. Requesting permission to sign the Lakeland contracts for 2025. Lakeland Mental Health provides us with a psychiatrist, a psychologist, and some different professional coordination for our non-secure evaluation program, and that's a pretty popular program. It has been for the past 20-some years. It's, yeah, we run about 30 youth through that a year, which is pretty comprehensive, and we get some good reports out of that. They are only requesting a 2% increase from 2025. So that would be, the request would be to sign the contract for, with the 2% increase from 2024 to 2025.
What is a 2% increase? 2% of what?
2% of, okay, one of them would be, I've got it right here, psychologist, we pay for a year for the psychologist is $26,757, so another 2% increase on that.
Okay, all right.
And then, oh, okay.
I was just trying to figure out how big of these figures are that we're going, taking 2% off. Thank you.
I think as a rule of thumb, those psychiatrists cost Lakeland over $100,000 annually. So, you know, they, they make up for those losses in other areas, but, you know, as serving on the Lakeland Board, that's always been a challenging ask. We're never going to ask our partners to make up for that difference, so it is a nominal increase, understanding that they still, each psychiatrist costs about $100,000, that they won't recover.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second.
Have motion to second. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. I have Quinn Jaggar and Michaela Whitereck. And Quinn, take it away.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I have three things for you today. I would like to open. I appreciate the opportunity that PEC gave me to start by being transparent, saying I can pay for all three of my requests. I had a wonderful opportunity from PEC to, I'm going to open with that today. We could go a different direction. So my first request, if you remember, in June of 2024, this board approved bringing on a temporary lead worker in Michaela's unit to help with the onboarding of four new staff that we brought in on, at the same time. We've had a good opportunity to evaluate how that's going, and the feedback that we received is that it's going wonderful. These positions typically require a 12-month training period as they're working with the healthcare programs. It's very intricate. There are frequent changes that happen with those programs, a lot to stay abreast of in terms of policies and regulations. Michaela and I have had an opportunity to kind of assess what this looks like, and we are here to request an additional six months on this temporary lead worker position to kind of finish out the training of these four staff. We do believe that, based on the feedback of the four staff, this, this will work well. We've already seen them have some independence in their work, but again, with the intricacies of this program, it usually takes about 12 months. So we are expecting that with the addition of the six month, six months, that should handle our training needs for these four new positions. The cost impact of this, if this, if this temporary lead worker, this would not go through, they'd be on grade 14, step 10. So the increase of grade 16, step 9, would be approximately $2,631. This is a position that has some federal reimbursement, so half of the cost would be regained by federal reimbursement, and the other half we would be able to use with the healthcare unwinding money that we still have. So with that, I'm looking to approve the extension of the temporary lead worker for an additional six.
And PEC did approve of this, particularly when we found out he could pay for it. Any questions for Quinn?
Move approval.
Second.
Have motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Quinn, you got another one, and you'll be joined by Jessica Mickelson. Jessica?
Good morning.
All right. Again, I'd like to open by saying I can pay for this. This, this position, we're here to request the hiring of a Min Choices reassessor. Again, recognizing I can pay for this, I want to also be incredibly transparent in saying this was not a budgeted position. The main reason behind that was there was proposed legislation that we just got word on in November that would have drastically impacted the reassessors' caseloads. That legislation did not pass, and so now, instead of having the requirement that these reassessors do the reassessments once every three years, it's back to, I guess, business as usual. We were initially a little bit worried that if that legislation passed, we'd have to look at reassigning some of the casework that these reassessors have, but without that legislation moving, we are struggling now. So that is the main reason why we did not budget for this, is that we didn't know the outcome of that legislation until November of this year. So that's kind of the background to set the stage of where we're at. Currently, we have three full-time Min Choices reassessors in Jessica's unit right now. They're the ones that are completing reassessments for folks on home and community-based waivered services. Over the past several years, we've seen a continual increase in these reassessments due to Clay County's population growth and the higher number of individuals moving here that are already enrolled in waiver programs. I did attach kind of that data, so you can see in 2021 up to 2024, the increase in those reassessment numbers. The recommended caseload size for reassessors is 15 reassessments per month, due to the time, nature, and intensity of what these assessments look like. Our three reassessors average 17.5 per month, but in some months reach up to 21 or more when they're at their busiest. Another large factor on top of the legislation is that there was a transition from PCA services to community-first services and supports in October of 2024, which put new responsibilities onto these assessors and reassessors. Basically, makes the process longer and more intense for the work that they're doing. Another unfunded mandate. Between the additional responsibilities of this change to CFSS and the overages in that recommended caseload size, if we brought on a new position, they would immediately have a full caseload and would be able to claim the revenue that these positions generate right out of the gates. The, I also attached the annual revenue that these, that these positions generate. You can see, based on the three existing, that didn't print very well, I apologize about that, poor color, you can see the three, if you, the three assessors generate in between $130,000 and $135,000 worth of revenue per year. Our approximate total cost for bringing on this position, including training and technology, would be $93,104. So we do anticipate that there would be a net positive on the 2025 budget by adding this position. We also did bring this to PEC and the recommendations to bring this report. So with that, I am requesting a motion to bring on a full-time social worker on disability services effective February 3, because we know that we're not going to be able to onboard it any sooner than, and I would request backfill if there's an internal appointment. Healed for any questions at this.
How many of these assessments are rejected? Are there any rejected ones? I mean, I know how many you go through, but are there some you go through that are rejected too?
Yes. If the person has a change in circumstances and no longer meets eligibility, then they're denied and they lose their waiver eligibility.
When do we have, five a month, 10 a month, 20 a month that we reject?
You know, typically, once someone does meet the eligibility requirements, they usually maintain that until there's some significant improvements in their quality of life that are made. So we find people do stay on waiver programs for, you know, five, 10 years. A lot of people are on it for their entire lives, just due to the disability that they have. So we don't see a lot of denials with reassessments. We see more denials with initial assessments, so someone who's not currently receiving services, seeking services. So for initial assessments, we probably do about five to six denials a month, but typically reassessments, I'd say one to two, and often it's like a step-down process, so you may no longer be eligible for waiver, but we might look at a lower program that might help meet the person's needs.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, Quinn or Jessica, the, I mentioned in the language that's in your document here, and it states that statutory changes were proposed that would have drastically reduced the need to complete reassessments, only require them once every three years. However, this legislation did not pass. Is, is that something that, that the department was suggesting be done?
So it was proposed legislation that our MACSA committee had brought to the Department of Human Services, and they had worked on this for several years. It's been in the works, but it did not receive CMS or federal approval.
Okay, because this, okay, so this requires, this goes all the way to the Fed's regulations.
Yep. So DHS was in support of some changes with it, and it doesn't necessarily mean that everybody would be able to waive their reassessment. There were quite a bit of requirements in order for someone to meet that eligibility, to not have to have an annual assessment, but it would have still have brought down our caseloads, you know, pretty significantly, but CMS did not support that.
And I, again, I'm, a lot of times I, I'm interested in the policy, you know, as opposed to maybe the position. I, I think. I think the policies are always important. And if it's something that's been recommended, I think that's something that we need to be helping you where we can to see that some of those things can be implemented. So I appreciate that language being in there, because I'd like to know, you know, why was it shot down? You know, and what can we do to maybe change that next time? So.
And they're still working on some language to assist with, since it didn't receive federal approval, to help streamline the Min Choices assessment process, because it is a very lengthy process. A reassessment, on average, takes about eight hours to complete, and initial assessments between 10 and 15 hours for each person.
And in your opinion, going, you know, having that done every three years doesn't really harm anything, right?
It depends on the person. So if we have someone who doesn't have any, you know, significant changes, their, you know, services relatively stay the same throughout the year, from year to year, or even for our more chronically, you know, someone whose circumstances are such that there's not going to be a lot of improvement, there's not a lot of reason for a new intensive assessment for that person every year.
But those things are determined by the people doing the work, right? I mean, they can tell if there's a need to do an assessment sooner.
Yep. The case manager for the waiver case manager would have had to have made a recommendation that the person was eligible to waive their reassessment.
Well, it's disappointing that that action that was, you supported, wasn't approved. You know, it seems to me that that's a way to streamline things that, in my opinion, wouldn't harm anybody by doing it. So, Mr. Chair, if there's no other comments, I would move approval of the request.
Second. We have a motion in a second, but Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I, thanks for the presentation. My question is more on the workload item here, where it talks about over the past several years, we've seen a continual increase in the area due to Clay County's population growth, a higher number of individuals moving here already enrolled in waiver programs. And curious, you know, I've had conversations with legislators over the last few months about requirements and what is allowed to ask for and what's not allowed to ask for in regards to, say, a doctor's note discussing the level of disability isn't, you know, necessarily looked at as something, right? I mean, there's some questions and concerns there. And so my question, more so looking at how many more assessments are projected from 2021 to this year. Are there differing levels of requirements in North Dakota for those residents moving to Minnesota? And I think to justify what you're talking about, is there an ability for counties specifically to make decisions that are stronger requirements, right? I mean, I think there's an importance for these programs, but I also want to make sure that the money's going to folks that really, really need it. And so is there an ability to do something locally or not?
It's all state mandates. You know, the requirements for Min Choices are the same, no matter where you live within Minnesota, and we are required by the state statute to provide a Min Choices assessment to any Minnesota resident who requests one.
Okay.
So we can't even deny it, and if we were to say no, we would have to send a notice of action, and the person would be able to go through an appeals process.
So then, to the question about interstate travel, is there a different requirement in North Dakota for folks that already have these waivers coming to Minnesota?
As far as what they're eligible for in Minnesota?
As far as what was required for approval to be on the waiver?
In North Dakota.
In North Dakota.
Yeah, they have completely different eligibility requirements than what we have.
So then, as you're going through these reassessments, then you apply?
They would have to go through an initial assessment process.
Okay, that was more my question.
For a Minnesota resident to be eligible for Minnesota Medicaid and then go through a Newman Choices assessment, there's no transfer.
Okay.
Although the standards might be different, you do have to establish residency in Minnesota before you would engage in these assessments.
And that was maybe more so my question, making sure that then that triggers them to be into the reassessment or the initial assessment, right?
So we do see a lot of transfers from out of state. I mean, I'd say this past year, and I haven't collected that data, it would be interesting to see how many of our initial assessments are from people who have just moved. And historically, we kind of just saw that from maybe South Dakota, North Dakota, and now we're seeing it from all over the country. And we've had people moving from Nevada, Tennessee, and into Clay County.
So then, my maybe last comment is, you know, I want to encourage us to continue to work together to identify those issues where your employees are saying, boy, it would make sense to make this a requirement, or this isn't, you know, this isn't maybe a priority, so that we can advocate for that at the state level, because Commissioner Krabinoff is on that Health and Human Services Committee. And I would venture to guess that issues that Clay County have are similar to our other county counterparts.
Another change with Min Choices that has impacted the number of assessments we're completing is about five years ago, there was a change at the state level where it was the county of financial responsibility that was required to complete the person's assessment, and now it's the county of location. So when we have kids from other counties at West Central or in one of our treatment facilities or one of our ERTs, so even like our detox, I mean, as we are expanding the facilities and programs that we're offering, if the person is physically in Clay County at the time that the assessment is requested, we are responsible for completing that.
So then, as a further, as we continue to lobby statewide for the need to have these facilities locally, which we appreciate, I think that also needs to be part of the dialogue, that it's the county of location, not financial responsibility.
Well, it makes sense for it to be the county of location to cut down on that travel time, because, I mean, we used to have to drive to Minneapolis to complete the assessment or wherever throughout the state. So it does make sense, but as we expand our programs in Clay County, we also have to anticipate completing more Min Choices assessments.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I've already made the motion.
Oh, okay. All right. We have a motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And Quinn, you got another one?
Thank you so much. My last item today, I would like to approve hiring one office support specialist position. This was a new request in the 2025 budget. Again, I have an attachment to kind of show you a visual aid. Right now, we have a, what we're looking to do with this office support is add .5 into child support and .5 coverage into our social services department. Right now, as it exists, the office support to staff ratio in child support is 1 to 17, and for social services, it's 1 to 24.7. We're seeing a lot of the social workers and fraud and child support folks kind of do some of the more clerical work, just because there isn't enough to go around. So that's why this position was built into the 2025 budget, to help assist with that and take some of that workload off of the social workers and child support officers as well. This really would help kind of spread that out, and we do believe that this position would have kind of a full caseload, full responsibilities from day one, if not be able to expand on some things we haven't been able to do, because the social workers and child support officers have been doing that right now. I guess the cost for this would be grade 10, step 1, would be looking at a total cost of $72,843. Half of this would be able to get 66% federal reimbursement in the child support unit. That reimbursement is a little bit higher than the 50%, so half of that would be 66% reimbursed, so there'd be $24,038. Total budget impact would be $48,805.
Commissioner Campbell.
Quinn, you mentioned that this was put into the 2025 budget as a new request. Did we grant that in our preliminary?
We didn't.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we took that in. Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I guess with that, I would yield for any questions.
Quinn, the problem when you lead off with the first two that says they pay for themselves, you should have led off with this one. I appreciate that it's 66% reimbursed as well. And definitely, it would be difficult to support the others without supporting something like this. You just need to hang around some of these committees a little bit to realize how much the caseload has gone up, and with that, you know, all different areas need to increase to help with staff workload, and I appreciate that it was also included in the budget. I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second it with a comment. I, you know, oftentimes, you know, when we hear about the, all of the services that are done, and then there's the occasions where there's checks done, checks and balances done, and there is fraud that happens, and that department helps in that regard, and it's a benefit to us to find those things, and it's, on behalf of all our taxpayers, that's a good thing, when we're being able to recoup some things that probably never should have been paid for, to begin with, not at the fault of those working on it, but, yeah, so I think this is good.
Okay. And you seconded that, didn't you?
I did.
Commissioner Campbell. Okay. Valid point, a system overwhelmed is a system that's subject to fraud, and we've seen a lot of that, you know, nationally and in the state. And I think it's incumbent on us, when a reasonable request for staff is made, is to make sure it's addressed. So, having said that, any other comments or concerns, questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Quinn. Next up, we have County Attorney Milton.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Happy New Year. I just, unfortunately, just recently got a notification of resignation of an individual Assistant County Attorney who's looking to move to the Twin Cities. As you are all aware, you know, both 2023 and 2024, we've definitely seen some volatility with resignations, but within that as well, have had a couple that have come back after leaving, which is always encouraging to hear, you know, what they saw, and maybe the grass wasn't always greener. But with that said, just the other day, I was commenting to my chief assistants how we were full with Assistant County Attorneys, and I said we were the most stable I'd seen for a while and thought we were good for some longevity, and then the next day, one of my.
See, that's what you kept.
And I said, I told him, I will not be talking about it again out loud. So unfortunately, it is an individual looking to, he's getting married, looking to move to the Twin Cities, and I think that's something we continue to see, and we just deal with it as it comes, and so it is unfortunate that he's leaving. He's an excellent attorney, but with that, we are asking to be able to fill that budget position.
Motion through. Okay.
Excuse me.
Have a motion?
Frank, was that a motion?
Yes, it was.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And let's see, next up. Darren.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. It's Darren Brooke, by the way, for the record.
And my last official act is the HR Director.
Well, we refer to you as the current HR Director.
The acting HR Director. No, I'm not retiring, not yet. So at the end of the year, we always go through our personnel policy and kind of update everything in there, and a couple of things that have passed through the E S S T laws this year, we've already added to the personnel policy. But what I want to do is go through these and kind of make sure that you're aware of what we're changing and what we're adding. Some of these you've already approved at different board meetings, and all of these items were taken to the PIC a couple of weeks ago. So the first section is the benefits package. Both of these were already approved. The first one was allowing married couples that both work for Clay County to get a single family plan. So I won't go over that one too much, because that was discussed in a board meeting on October 8th already and approved. And then the other one was allowing elected officials to opt out of the county benefits, and that was already approved on November 19th. So those two things will be in the new 2025 personnel policy. If, you can stop me if you have any questions on each of these sections. Probably the biggest thing that came about is the changes in the E S S T, earned sick and safe time. And so what I did was, I incorporated all those changes into just our basic sick leave in our personnel policy. The law says that we don't have to call it E S S T as long as it has all the requirements of E S S T. So I basically took the sick leave policy, rewrote that to encompass all the E S S T changes that started. Now, as you remember, this went into effect in 2024, and then they came back mid-year and made some changes to that law as well. So this sick leave, Section 16, will already incorporate all of those changes. One of the things that we, that they changed was the bereavement leave. They allow sick leave to be used for bereavement leave as well. It's not a huge change for us, because we already have sick leave, paid sick leave in our personnel policy, but now they can use it as part of their E S S T balance. The other big change was, they said that, if you recall, when the law first came out, it said that you could use 48 hours per year or 80 hours after two years of E S S T law, E S S T time. So then they went and changed that and said, basically, if you give any kind of leave, whether it be sick or vacation, that E S S T applies to all of those hours. So instead of having the 48 and the 80, if somebody has sick leave, and if they have 1,000 hours, they can use sick leave for these extended family members and extended issues, whether it be health, sick, safe leave, whatever. So that is a pretty big change for us. So I had to rewrite the sick leave policy to get, to incorporate all of those changes. The other change was, when they first came out with the law, they said that one of the reasons you could take E S S T was when a school or daycare was closed due to a weather event. The problem is, they didn't exempt any emergency positions, like highway workers, law enforcement, corrections, all of that. So technically, we could have our whole highway department say, oh, the schools are closed, so I'm not coming in to work. They realized that they made that mistake, and they changed that law, that portion of the law in, I believe it was August, so that they have a weather event exception. And so what it basically says is that if you are, if your job requires you to be there based on a weather event, meaning plow drivers, police, correctional officers, you know, they can't just take off and say. So they say that's the exception. If you work in one of those positions, then you cannot take advantage of using sick leave if your daycare or your school is closed due to a weather event. The problem with that is, they made it a law, but then they made it that you have to negotiate with the unions for that MOU. So it's kind of counterproductive. It's a law, but you have to negotiate it. So for the past month, I've been meeting with the unions and sending them an MOU for the correctional sergeants, correctional officers, deputies, lieutenants, and highway. I think those are the five. So that is in the process of being completed. I don't foresee any huge pushback on that, but that was one of the law changes, and so I stuck that into the sick leave policy as well. As far as the part-time and full-time employees, there's no real impact on E S S T as far as accruals go. And they didn't change the calculation that, like, variable hours still get one hour of sick leave for every 30 hours work. And we are already doing that. We've already changed our HR payroll system to accommodate for that as well. And the, the other thing with the sick leave and the E S S T is, now it has become protective leave, similar to FMLA. So in our, in our policy, we used to say that the manager can approve or deny sick or vacation. Now, if they say this is for E S S T purposes, whether it be a family member or a serious health condition, that is considered protected leave. It'll make it a little bit more difficult. Now, if there is, if there is fraud or anything like that, then we can certainly go down that path with discipline and investigating and everything else. But we can, they do allow us to require documentation after three days of absences. So those are some of the big points in the sick leave policy that were changing, changed for 2025. Any questions on any of that?
Questions for Darren.
No. The other thing that we had happen this year was, had to do with government employee discounts. And we found that there's really nothing in our personnel policy that describes what, when, and what you can use government employee discounts for. So the, we kind of expanded on it and added that chapter. Let me get to it here. And basically, what it's saying is, if, if an organization or a business or something gives the government employee discounts as an individual, then you can certainly take that. It's kind of like, you know, some hotels give you military discounts or government employee discounts and stuff like that. That, that is acceptable. But what is not permissible is if we have, if Clay County has an account, and then what this happened was with, we had an account with one of the auto parts dealers, that we would, as a county, get reduced prices and discounts for different parts that we bought for our vehicles. And we had an employee went in and said, I'm with the county, and it was for a personal use, but he used the discount that the county was given based on a code or an account or whatever. So we wanted to put that into the policy of when you can use employee discounts and when you cannot use employee discounts. Any questions on that?
Questions.
All right. You guys are being easy today.
We're not done yet.
I know. There's only two left.
I didn't hear a motion.
I do. Okay, employee, that's easy. So what do we do about it?
Pardon me?
What do we do about it if the employee does do that?
Well, that, that would be through the disciplinary process. You know, at, once this gets into policy, it's, I usually send out all these policy changes to all the employees at the beginning of the year. So I'll say, these are the personnel policy changes for this year, and then it goes out to everybody, so.
I was just wondering, if you make a $5 purchase or a $500 purchase, is there a difference?
Yeah. And to tell you the truth, we're not always going to catch it. But if, if a supervisor knows that that's happening, and, and the way we caught it this time was just a fluke, where the, the person behind the guy, the employee that was buying it was a Morehead Police Officer, and said, oh, I don't think he's allowed to do this, and brought it to our attention, so.
What, what happens if, if a county employee goes to an auto parts store and says, I work for Clay County, but this is for my personal use, and they still give them the discount?
Well, we, we actually went and talked to the, when this happened, and they tried to combat that. They usually try to get an ID card or something like that. I can't guarantee that every business is going to be allowed--
But I mean, but I mean, what, what penalty can you put on an employee who would go there and say, you know, I happen to work for Clay County, but this is for my personal use? And the guy on the other side of the counter says, well, I'm going to give you the discount?
I think, I think it would be up to the employee to say, okay, this is, this not, is not allowed, at least on the personnel policy. So it's going to be up to the employee. If the, if the, if the business still does it for him, and it, and that's what this business was doing, is they weren't checking, the, the person just came in and said--
But I mean, if, if the employee said he was, it was for his personal use--
Yeah.
And he, and they still give him a discount.
Yeah, there's not much--
Again, I, I, you know, what do you do with that? I mean, it's, that's, the, I think the employee, the employee would have fulfilled their obligation to say that, you know, this isn't, this isn't company use.
Yeah.
You know, I, I guess I don't want us to get into a point where a county employee who thought they were doing the right thing, and they, and--
Right.
The person on the other side of the counter says, I'm going to give you the discount anyway.
Yeah.
And, and why should, why should that then be a penalty to the--
I think, I think they could still, if they want, if the business wants to give them a discount, then--
Okay.
Fine.
Okay.
Give them a discount. But we're just saying, you can't use a Clay County-established account with, with the business. And I think it, it happens like auto parts, you know, where somebody comes in, oh, I work for Clay County. Well, is this going on the Clay County charge card, or is this, you know, are you paying for this?
Well, yeah, and it certainly shouldn't, if it's for personal use, it certainly shouldn't go on a charge card.
Right, right. Then it's theft.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. I guess I opened my mouth too early. Section 36, I just, we didn't have anything in the personnel policy about smoking and vaping in our policy. We have our own standalone smoking and tobacco policy, but we thought it would be important just to put this in the personnel policy as a little blurb, saying this is what's allowed and not allowed, and then refer back to the tobacco use policy. And the last one, Section 40, we had some, and most of these have come out of issues that we had throughout the year with an employee that we said, okay, we can't point to the personnel policy, say you can or can't do this. And so this was one of the things that came out, where some employees were bringing their pets, their animals, their dogs to work with them, and we found out that we really don't have a policy against that. And so this is a result of, okay, we need to at least have something out there. I don't think that we're trying to say, if you bring your new puppy into work to show everybody, and then, and then they leave or whatever, that's not what we're looking at. We're looking at somebody that's bringing their, their dog, cat, whatever, to work every day. And then, so we're trying to avoid that, based on, you know, people being allergic to dogs, or the dog not behaving, or, you know, there's all kinds of things. It's a HR horror story most of the time, I could say. There's a lot of businesses, companies that, that allow pets in the, in their business. We're cer- certainly not anti-dog or anti-cat. I mean, I, I have had many, many dogs in my life, but I think in the workplace, we just have to have something that explains that you can't bring your dog to work every single day, so.
Ezra can't bring a pig in every day.
An Ezra.
Different one every day.
A little one. A little one would be fine. With that being said, those are the changes for 2025. Any other questions?
Questions for Darren, comments?
I, I have a comment. Obviously, Darren, you've done a, done a nice job trying to verbally explain all of these changes that are in this proposed policy. So my, my concern with, with changes is, I like to see red line versions.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I, I like to see red line versions when, when we're changing a policy.
Okay.
And I'm going to give you an example. Last, the last meeting we had, we had a public hearing, and it was on a proposed change in our ordinance, which basically was a complete rewrite of an ordinance. And the public hearing happened afterwards, we voted on it, and there was no red line version of what changes were done. So we, we approved a policy that I didn't know what else was changed besides what was maybe talked about during the process.
Okay.
So I just, you know, and this goes, Steve, I think in the future, I don't know if PIC Committee got to see a red line version of this, but--
It was basic--
Especially when you're, when you do a complete rewrite of a policy, it's nice to know what was thrown out, what was left in, and what was added.
Yep.
Because that's our responsibility to look at that. And I, I, I can say I have full faith in you, and I can say I have full faith in everybody else who does it. But when the rubber hits the road, and all of a sudden, somebody says, why didn't you catch this?
Right.
Well, I didn't look, or I didn't see it. So I, again, I, policies are important, and, and it's, from my standpoint, I'd like to see red line versions.
Okay. I, I can certainly do that. That's, wouldn't be very difficult.
And maybe I'm the only one who thinks so of this board, but, huh? Okay.
Okay. Certainly.
Are the comments or questions? If not, we entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 personal policy, uh, policy changes as stated.
I'll second the motion.
Have motion to second, further discussion?
And again, I, I would request, if I could, maybe Darren, if you could, you know, maybe submit an after-the-fact red line version.
Yep, I can do that.
Because what, what I'm gathering here is, you've done a total rewrite of certain portions--
Yeah, the sick leave policy. And, and I'll tell you that I'm anticipating that the whole policy will be rewritten next year when paid family and medical leave hits.
And again, for this board, I want to give you an example. So Commissioner Mojo and I have been working on the development code ordinance, rewrites of those ordinance and everything. And one of the things that we've, we've specifically said, because it's a complicated, long ordinance, and it's important, that when, when we bring those things forward to the full board, bring a red line version, so that everybody knows what we're changing from to.
Okay.
And I--
Yep, I can, I can--
I appreciate--
I can do the red line and send that out to the board--
Yeah.
If there's any issues with that, we, should I just bring it back in January, or just?
I, you know what, I think, I think, you know, we've got a motion to second. I'm going to support the motion, but I, just--
Okay.
To follow up, I would like to see a red line version of what actually I voted on.
Can do.
Further discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I just wanted, very quick, Marion Danielson went to her retirement ceremony yesterday as well. She's been here for 31 years--
Wow.
And she wanted me to pass on to the board that she was truly appreciative of the board and all of their support that they've given to her and the employees. And I told her that I would pass that on to you guys, so, so there it is.
Well, I think she was a very special employee and knew her stuff well.
Yeah.
Thank you, Darren. Okay, next up, our current county administrator, Steve Larson. Our AMC voting.
Good, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As you recall, two times a year, we, we address, we address the AMC policy committees and voting delegates, I guess the voting delegates portion of it. But each, each year, we look at AMC policy committees. We also have our, provide notice of who our chairs, our vice chairs are going to be when we know that. Because of our rotation, we do, do know that. And so there's been some discussion about the policy committees and the, and the retirement of Commissioner Gross and Commissioner-elect Baer coming on board. And so based on those discussions, this document was, was completed. Based on those discussions, we also maintain the, the voting structure that we, that we did this past December for our annual conference. But again, all of these are up for, for discussion for, with, with the board, and without any of any questions.
Questions, Commissioner Campbell?
Not a question, but a comment. I know for as long as I can remember, I served on the Transportation Committee through AMC, and, and with Ezra coming on board, I, I did talk to Ezra, and, and he's, he'd like to have some involvement with transportation issues, and so I've made, made that suggestion that maybe he'd like to take that one, and I would take the general government, which Commissioner Gross had, and he was, he was happy to have that transportation one. So I just wanted to make that note, that we had that conversation.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I, you know, I think we can have this discussion later on in regards to who goes to that conference. I think it's been really helpful to have Planning and Zoney and our county engineer represented, because they have their individual association meetings as well. I really do think, given the work that Clay County has done in the health and human services area, it would be beneficial to have Quinn attend that conference as well. You know, I'm not quite sure if it makes sense to have him as a, a voting delegate or not, but just given the level of what we're doing statewide, I really think it would be beneficial for Quinn to be part of those dialogues as well.
That's something I would agree with. He is, he's got a lot of irons in the fire, and a lot of those are things that are statewide. The things that impact him are things that are determined through the legislature, and the AMC is our, is our outreach to that, so.
And I, and I would agree with Commissioner Mojo too, in terms of, you know, I think right now, we can list these voting delegates as they are, but during the course of the year, as we're going through our policy committees, and we're starting to see what amendments might be taking place, and what are the big issues going on, there might be a year where maybe, maybe there's nothing significant for Matt Jacobson to be, to be a voting delegate, where Quinn should be, or vice versa, in any one of those. But we can make that change. I think we still can make that change before the annual meeting, so.
That, that's correct, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Campbell, AMC does reach out prior to the, to the December conference and allows us to, the board, you know, that comes before you guys to make a final, final discussion or decision, again, going into that, that--
But I, but I do agree with Commissioner Mojo, whether Quinn would be a voting delegate or not, I think, I think he should certainly be aware that it, he'd be more than welcome to be at that convent, at that conference, because there are significant issues that relates to his department.
Further discussion?
I would support the, the addition of Quinn for that. I, I will have to say, again, relatively new, you know, with two years, but social services is so broad, and when I see all the amendments that they're bringing forward, just even the case of what we had earlier about reassessments, some of these other areas, they're mentioned, but it's very hard to have the depth of everything at one time. So I would appreciate that, his moment.
I think it makes a great deal of sense. I think we heard at the AMC conference this year, from a state budget standpoint, that, that human service, social services will soon be the highest budgeted item over education. And so we certainly know that it's our largest budget item here, and so having him there would, would make sense.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would move the slate that is presented for the Association of Minnesota Counties physicians.
I'll second the motion.
Have mo, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Next up, review of the Clay County Board of Commissioners Committee assignments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can we have Ezra come up to the microphone too, in case we need to ask him stuff?
Each, each December, going into our first meeting of the year, where, or the second meeting of the year, depending on the-- depending on the discussion that takes place, this board establishes your committee assignments. In addition to attending board meetings and taking phone calls from your constituents, you also have a significant portfolio that, that you attend meetings throughout the month, whether that's a weekly basis, quarterly, sometimes annual basis. And so each year, in, in December, we generally have you take a look from, from the standpoint of are there challenges that you have with the committee dates that you have that, that interact or counteract, counteract each other and make it challenging to do that, or if they're just other, other things that you're looking to, to maybe to switch or, or give to someone else. And so with that, I would open this up for, for discussion for, for Commissioners. We'll make the agreed upon adjustments and have them as part of the packet, packet for further discussion on January 7.
Well, Mr. Chair, and Steve, there is a couple of notable ones, obviously, that would, that would happen. It would be, under Ezra, he was, AMC would be transportation. And then under mine would be general government for AMC. I do want to also note that personnel issues would come off of Commissioner Gross's, and that would go to mine. I think another one that pertains to Commissioner Mojo and I are the DMV Finance Committee and the Withdrawal Management Detox Facility Finance Committees. I think those pretty much are done. I don't know that there's a reason to meet on those anymore. Is that correct, Jenny? Would you say that?
I don't, I mean, do we have one more with substance?
Well, and that, but that was my, my point would be is, and so what happens a lot of times is these, these things start in the building committee, and then once we get to a certain level, it shifts to finance. And what we don't have on here right now is the PRTF slash non-secure finance committee. And I, so I think that one would, would.
Absorb.
Absorb the other two that we would be taking off. And I mean, those are, those are the noted things that I could see right now.
In regards to the Minnesota Rural County Caucus, Francis has been on that one, and I've been his alternate. And so in dialogue with Commissioner-elect Bear, we've talked about me becoming the main member on the Minnesota Rural Counties Caucus, and then he would be my alternate. And that's really important, especially when you're newly elected. There's so much that happens, legislative discussions, and it really helps you understand the pulse of what rural counties are dealing with.
No, I, I, I still have interest in that chamber one, so I, I don't know that I want to.
The other, the other one, and I've talked to Highway about this, is that I would then take highway tracking. That would be added to my portfolio with Commissioner Campbell. And then one that I have a scheduling conflict with, it's really been difficult for me to get to the Clay Soil and Water meeting. And so wondering if Ezra would want to take that from me, and then, you know, I could, since I'm on Environment, Natural Resources, stay on as his alternate, and so then make sure we can collaborate together, if that works for you.
That should. I mean, Paul is an alternate on there as of right now, right?
Paul would become the main one, and then.
And I would be the alternate.
Yeah.
And Ezra, when, when you see your name as alternate, you're.
You still can go.
You can still go to all the meetings. It's just, yeah, it's just when it comes to voting.
Just that time, I think it's three o'clock, is really hard.
I was just thinking Ezra, he'd be on the highway tracking. That's still an important part of the district. I mean, District Two involves all the, half the roads.
Yeah.
So I don't know, that's a pretty important committee.
I, I'd like to keep it frank, but Jenny also has a big district in her area.
Right. See, I realize that. You both are probably.
Well, I'm not interested in bringing that one up. I've been working on that a long time.
Couple of things on mine. AMC Public Safety, Safe and Secure Courts. That grant, we, we've got all the work done on it. I don't anticipate there'll be a need for that to continue. I've talked to Ezra, and I'll take primary on Yellow Ribbon, and he'll be alternate. The City of Fargo Homeless Task Force. There may be ongoing work with that, but at this point, the City of Fargo's progressed on without inviting any Minnesota partners over. So I don't know if we need to reconfigure that simply as homeless issues. I had that before with, when I first got on with, working with the Police Department and the Sheriff's Office and Churches United. But I don't know if the City of Fargo is actually a designated, as designated here is, is an accurate reflection on what our interaction is. The Corrections Design and Operations, that hasn't met since I've come on board. And I don't, I think we've got the design and that correctional facility done. And the Minnesota-North Dakota Mutual Aid for Law Enforcement's no longer meeting because we got the state statute on deadly force figured out. So those can be removed from my portfolio.
Question on the Minnesota-North Dakota Mutual Aid, understanding dialogues that are happening statewide. Do you foresee that there could be an issue that comes out of legislation that would affect that? And if so, would it make sense to keep it for now?
It's a long shot, but it doesn't cost anything to keep it on. That's, that's a valid point. We don't know what the legislature may come up with that puts our relationship across, with our border states in jeopardy again. So maybe that would be premature to remove that.
I think it would be. I think you should keep that on your radar. Because I know through the homelessness part, I mean, even, I don't know what Morehead, Morehead's involvement is in that currently, but they, you know, there are meetings that they talk from city to city. And I know I get calls from Mayor Carlson, you know, on updates and whatnot, so I would keep it open.
Okay.
On which one?
His involvement on the, it would be the, what's the exact name?
Mutual aid.
Well, this was City Fargo Homeless Task Force.
Well, he was, I, he was talking about mutual aid, then he went to homeless.
No, homeless.
Well, can I ask, there's a homeless, local homeless committee that Commissioner Krabnoff is on. Could we tweak that to change Commissioner Ebbinger's to that as well? Because, you know, I agree, I don't know what the City of Fargo Homeless Task Force has to do with Clay County. But I do know, given the issues of the day that we're hearing about frequently.
Right.
It's important to have a Clay County voice on how we help mitigate some of these homeless challenges that we have. And so having two Commissioners part of what that local homeless committee is, maybe would be the best.
And I think for the most part, David, except for the meeting you had over in Fargo, we've both been interchanging all the other ones.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I think that's a good.
Yeah.
Are you keeping up with it? Random. Okay. To that comment, I think Commissioner Gross and I, we're on the Correctional Facility Behavioral Health Design. I think we can take that off both of ours. I do know that there's challenges in regards to Lakeland staffing that position, but we're really covering that under the Lakeland umbrella.
And I, I had some thoughts about the Criminal Justice Advisory Board. We've not heard from the new Chief Probation Officer calling a meeting, but also there's a lot of dialogue statewide on changes being made to community corrections. And I think we probably need to keep that opened, but it'll be more of a community corrections function, but I think that meets under the, under the, the definition.
Another, another one that I think is, it's certainly probably done for now, but would be the Public Safety Funds Committee. That was kind of a one-time deal that's there, and I think, have those funds all been?
They were, they were, the remaining dollars were put towards the 2025 budget, so yes.
You know, so I don't, you know, unless the state comes up with another reason to have that, I think that committee could probably be dissolved. Hmm?
I said the same with ARPA.
We're getting rid of committees, good. Oh, yeah, I wanted to, yeah, thank you. On, on here too, I think the alternate for the Diversion Authority Board was originally Frank on there was the alternate. And that one, because of Commissioner Mojo's district and a lot of it being involved there, she's willing to take that alternate position. So that one would move to Commissioner Mojo.
I have a couple of finding.
You and David are both on that though, aren't you?
Correct, but I'd be the alternate to both of them. As you were.
And Commissioner Krabnoff?
My, on second on my list, the AMC Infrastructure Resilience Advisory Task Force, that's completed. When it comes to the Buffalo Red River Watershed, I'm wondering if it would be possible. Talking with Ezra, him being the main person for the Wild Rice, I'd be happy to continue as alternate on that. I went several times when Frank wasn't also.
I think we all are.
We all are in the alternates.
So we just.
Yep, so I think the way it's listed, because those are public meetings.
Okay.
And advertised that we were all listed as alternates.
And more specifically, maybe it comes back to the Buffalo Red, and help me on this one. Did, on, I take interest in the One Watershed One Plan. And I think Jenny, was that you and Frank on that, on the Buffalo Red? I'm thinking years ago when I was on it with Soil and Water.
Well, you are an alternate on the Wild Rice One Watershed One Plan?
Right. I did a couple of those, but again, I think as an alternate.
Correct.
But I'm more interested on the Buffalo Red. And maybe that's just an alternative piece that's been mentioned, but it isn't, doesn't speak specific to that.
Well, we do need. I mean, we can put Commissioner Bear as the alternate on the Buffalo Red One Watershed One Plan, and you can be with me, the voting delegate, on the One Watershed One Plan for the Buffalo Red, if that's what you're asking. Yeah?
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping for.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, but.
Does that make sense, Steve?
And I'll, I'll still keep doing my monthly meetings.
So.
Currently, it's Commissioner Gross and I.
As the liaison?
Liaison for both of them. And then under Paul's policy or committee assignment, it's the alternate for the Wild Rice. So why don't you give? Yeah, I guess I don't, I don't have Wild Rice, I just have Otter Tail. So why don't you give Commissioner Krabnoff the One Watershed One Plan for the Buffalo, and then add Commissioner Bear as the alternate for those?
I would keep being the One Watershed One Plan Wild Rice.
Yep, yep.
And then Commissioner Mojo, you would, you would no longer be the Buffalo Red?
No, I would.
So we'd have, we'd have Commissioner Krabnoff and you to maintain would be the liaison. But then also, we have Commissioner Bear. We would then have three.
Could you do that?
Well, the, the chance of us all three being able to make those, I think, is we just coordinate, make sure.
Okay. So we'll list, we'll list all three, but with the understanding that the intent would only have two.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, Ezra would be listed as an alternate then, right?
Correct.
For the Buffalo Red.
The Buffalo.
But not for the Wild Rice.
Right. But that's the one where he would not attend unless one of the other two.
Right.
Because that's not, those aren't, those aren't public meetings.
And those aren't frequent meetings either.
Okay.
And then as I go down, I had a question on Felton Prairie. I've never known what that is.
Well.
You haven't heard about the Butter.
You haven't heard about the Dakota Skipper?
Only in Frank County.
Yep.
And a little laugh behind it.
I can give you a book.
That one comes up frequently when, I mean, it's kind of in collaboration with the county-owned property. And then when those hayland leases come up, or when DNR wants to meet.
Important to keep then. Okay.
Well, someone should be on that anyways.
Yeah.
Actually, we should just keep.
No, that's fine.
Rank conservative citizen advisory to the Dakota Skipper.
So a question for Dave on this one, on the Greater FM Economic Development Corp. Where do we sit on that on policy anymore?
Well, they have partnered with the chamber. As we stand right now, our membership is one member on the Executive Committee who also serves on the regular board. And that would be me at this point.
What I'm asking you, should we just strike me from that? I know it says alt, but.
Yeah, should we, what?
Should I, should we remove that from my list?
Oh, yeah, they no longer give us another membership, other than I would serve as the only member serving both on their board and on the Executive Committee.
Yeah.
And.
That's the Greater Ferguson Red?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, under their new structure, Commissioner Ebbinger, are there going to be, are there going to be like policy committees underneath that, that, that?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're kind of pro temp, but yeah, there are policy committees. And to have Commissioner Krabnoff listed as potentially part of the EDC policy committees that come up would be, would be valuable. That, you know, again, I've, I've stated this repeatedly, the EDC, although the chamber does a lot of work with this side of the river, the EDC does not. And maybe in the policy branch of it, there would be an opportunity, at least with our universities, our colleges over here, a few other things get a, a little bit of attention once in a while. But as a rule, you're generally, generally dealing with North Dakota issues over there.
But I just, from, you're certainly well, more well aware of how they've, they've shifted in their, I guess, assignments from responsibilities. I just want to make sure that in the event that they still act, like with the diversion, we have the policies or the side committees, lands committees, those kind of things, that, that if we can have representation there, that we should have that, and then also they should be designated per DM, so.
Yeah, that would not be a bad idea to have Commissioner Krabnoff as a EDC.
Policy.
Policy.
Okay. And then moving down there, again, another line can be taken away, the infrastructure, that was a repeat from up above. Homeless, we talked about that. Had a question, the Northwest Emergency Committee conflicts totally. Uh, had a question, um, the Northwest Emergency Committee, um, conflicts totally with my schedule on those Thursdays, I've never been able to make a meeting, wondering if, uh, we'd, uh, have Ezra do that, if he'd be open to it?
Yeah.
And I think that, that's it, so.
I just want to point out, the AMC Public Safety, I'll no longer be the vice chair on that, and I will be the president of the Lake Agasson Regional Library Board, and I'm no longer the chair of the Triple RDC. Oh, and I will be the chair of the Partnership for Health.
Well, I think as long as you're listed as Partnership for Health, I don't.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm not.
Too much on some of them.
I'm not sure whether Mr. Gross was listed that way or not.
Ezra, would you, would, oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, maybe, I want to make sure Paul's done, I guess.
Yeah, man.
Ezra, would you be interested in, uh, being the alternate on the regional water plan, joint powers, Commissioner Mojo serves as the regular on that one, and I'm the alternate on that one, and I, a lot of times I have conflict with, and that one is, deals with , uh, things throughout the entire basin, and it might, it might be a good one for you to be on, or maybe get some Northern Clay County involvement there.
Yeah.
It meets quarterly, so it's not as much, it meets, and Fargo at the base and commission, but it's really good because all the partners that you're working on with the, the water district will be there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I, again, if we can take that one off of mine.
Because that's the same morning as Prairie Lakes.
Right. And I always have conflict there, so that would be a good one, if we can shift that to Ezra, that would be.
Okay.
Well, unless there's any additional changes, I, I, it's hard to, there's been so many moves, maybe we can re.
Yeah.
Discuss this.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe if we can maybe submit, or just have these changes made in.
We'll bring them for your consideration at the next meeting.
A red line version?
Is that a joke? We save jokes for the HR director, the current HR director? Yeah, you've got, you've got Steve's red line version.
Okay, any, any additional input on this? Steve, if we can get a, a mock-up on this, we can vote on it.
We'll have it back next week.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we need a break? Okay, we'll take five minutes. And we're going to, uh, go to committee reports, we'll start off with Commissioner Krabinoff.
I have none to report.
And we're going to go all the way around the room and hit everybody, Frank is going to be our last report today, so, Steve?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, seventeenth, participated in PIC, uh, talked about those items today at the, the board, uh, we talked about, uh, had a meeting on the seventeenth about the tobacco ordinance, uh, review, um, met with Troy Amundson, uh, well, excuse me, I'm in the wrong, in the wrong, wrong time here, sorry about that, I didn't have PIC last week, um, participated on the eighteenth at the Clay County Roundtable at M State, after that, we met, uh, with Commissioner Mojo, with Representative Keeler, Commissioner, Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Krabinoff, and I met after that, we are going to be presenting our, our resolution, uh, to MIAC, uh, next, uh, next Friday, uh, for the Indian Affairs Council, um, and so we were discussing that, participated in the potluck, uh, on the eighteenth, one of my favorite days of the year, uh, that afternoon, met with, uh, with Joe and Darren, the DMV, uh, the staff are having some issues with, uh, with, uh, the desks, the reaching them to the window, and so we're trying to find a good solution, uh, we've had a couple different, uh, incidences there where our staff have put in, uh, for medical issues. Uh, we worked on our PowerPoint for, for the MIAC presentation and the resolution, I had an MCC JPA meeting, uh, which, uh, I'll let the commissioners cover there, we talked about our 2025 calendar, we had a couple of relocation reimbursements and farm leases. Um, yesterday, I participated in the West Central Regional Water District, uh, again, we had, uh, many updates as far as where we are from the standpoint of, uh, of the district courts, uh, and, and the projects funding, again, I'll let our commissioners talk in more detail there. Um, yesterday, we met, uh, the NACO High Performance Leadership, uh, members that, that this board approved, uh, last year to participate in, we had a review, uh, to talk about, uh, the value that we had, that we saw with, uh, with those eleven-week programs, and we're hoping to continue those, uh, those opportunities for another ten staff next year, and we'll probably be bringing that, some findings to this board, uh, to talk about, uh, talk about what a great opportunity that was. Um, yesterday, participated in, in a non-scarred detention, uh, a meeting with commissioners, uh, in regards to, uh, the new facility and working with, uh, working at, uh, getting a local estimate for that project. Uh, yesterday afternoon then, participated in Commissioner Gross's, uh, open house, uh, it was great to see so many people there and see his family and grandkids, and so, uh, again, uh, a good, a great afternoon. Just a reminder to our citizens, we're closed tomorrow in observation of, uh, of the first, uh, first of the year, New Year's, um, uh, just to, of note, our withdrawal management facility, as was mentioned earlier, did open yesterday, uh, and have made that transition, and just of note, next, our first board meeting of the year, we will be meeting at eight fifteen, uh, to have the oath of office for Commissioner Ebger, Commissioner Krabinoff, and Commissioner Bear. And with that, I, you, concludes my report.
Ms. Melton, do you have anything for us?
I'll say, thanks Frank for all your service.
You're welcome.
Jackie? Mr. Mojo?
Thank you, on the seventeenth, we had a dialogue on the Resource Recovery Center contract discussion, uh, as we recall, the city of Moorhead had provided a one-year, um, notice, uh, so we will be having a meeting with the city of Moorhead coming in January. I also attended the, uh, Clay County Leaders Roundtable held at Minnesota State Community and Technical College, thank you to the chamber for organizing that, uh, another great opportunity for dialogue on shared mutual needs, particularly with legislative coordinating, we had a meeting as identified with Administrator Larson and Commissioner Krabinoff on the MMB and MIAC discussion presentation, working forward, um, the legislative session is now less than a month away, and later that day, I, uh, took part in a series of interviews with CAPLP for their Head Start Director position. On the nineteenth, I attended the SWAC committee meeting, uh, virtually, I attended the, um, AMC Extension Committee, we had, uh, because of scheduling conflicts, we weren't able to meet at the AMC Conference in December, but were able to meet to discuss some, uh, items of mutual concern, particularly with how the university and counties work forward in discussing the dialogue for the MOA after, um, this year's proposal, there was lots of great feedback on that, I attended another Head Start Director interview that day, I also attended the MCC JPA meeting, as reported on earlier, uh, did talk about, um, two relocation reimbursement requests, we did approve them, and then approved the 2025 farmland leases that had come forward. That day, I also attended the MetroCog Policy Committee meeting, uh, we did move it so that there wasn't a conflict with the diversion authority, so it was in abbreviated form, if you will, uh, all of those great reports are available on MetroCog's website. On the twenty-third, I attended a Lakeland Mental Health Board meeting, we did have really great dialogue on season-ending, or year-ending items, uh, good dialogue on financial trends and suggestions moving forward for the organization, and then yesterday, I attended the, um, we had a media, uh, questions at the Withdrawal Management Facility that Jackie coordinated, so I was able to attend that, uh, and then, um, we had, uh, non-secure work session design, uh, to di- talk about dialing in that pricing a little bit more with Gertz and Klein-McCarthy, and then attended Frank's open house as well, uh, throughout those meetings, um, weekly, we were meeting with, uh, Representative Keeler and Representative Joy and Senator Kupac, just to make sure they're all aware of our projects and how we continue to go forward. Um, the last thing I have, uh, I had to write it down because you all know I'm the crier of the group, and I wouldn't have been able to get through it without. Commissioner Gross, it has been a true honor to work alongside you for the past decade. Your steady leadership, wisdom, and unwavering dedication to Clay County has been an inspiration to all of us. You've always taken time to get to know people on an individual level, truly understanding their perspective, which made you an even more effective leader. Your mentality of doing what you say, handwriting thank yous, and finding common ground, even in the face of disagreements, has been a guiding example to all of us. You lead by example in every sense of the way, and it is something that we will all carry forward. Over the years, we've tackled some tough challenges, and your guidance helped us navigate those moments with clarity and strength. Your quick wit and compassion always has brought a sense of warmth and light to our meetings, making even the most difficult of days more manageable. You've represented all of Clay County with honor, from the rural corners to the organized cities, and all of them have benefited greatly from your leadership. I will deeply miss your presence at the board, but I know you've earned this next chapter. I wish you and Levon nothing but the best as you move forward. Thank you for everything, Francis, and be well, my friend.
You're gonna make me cry, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mojo, that was beautiful. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, on December eighteenth, we had our Prairie Lakes Solid, Municipal Solid Waste Meeting in Purim, uh, went through several items, um, I think the budget is, was kind of in line with what we projected, uh, we finally are down to, uh, we're not in a negative delivery stance for, in terms of tons, so I want to congratulate Cory and his group for that, that, at one point in time, we were as much as, what, six, seven hundred tons short, which is, when you multiply that times a hundred and sixty-seven dollars a ton, it's a lot of money, uh, so he's really done a nice job there, and I just congratulate them on that work. Um, as I've reported here before, we're working on an ash management plan, um, Otter Tail County did buy that prop, that additional property which I reported on, and we're going to be in the process of working on a MOU between, um, Prairie Lakes and, um, Otter Tail and Howe, that will be compensated for over a number of years. Uh, the, we did get some information that, on the ash utilization for roads, uh, we had an extensive, uh, project done by, um, Ron Intertek, and as it turns out, they've determined that seventeen percent of, of road base can be the ash that we have, which is, it's a significant amount of product, material, that over time, and they said, they said, actually, the, the higher that percentage goes that you use, the harder the road gets, but then it becomes too susceptible to cracking because it's so hard, so, so they, so in other words, so what's, and we've got, uh, scheduled for, uh, 2025 now, there's going to be two roads in Becker County that we're going to be using this product on as, as, um, test, pilot projects to see how, how that works, and if all goes well, we're gonna, we've already had some preliminary talks with Mindot about the potential use of ash in, uh, not only county roads, but other roads that might be beneficial throughout the state, where they can take advantage of this, this product, and not only do we have it here, but they have it in Crookston and other areas, uh, also have that ash that can be utilized in other beneficial ways. Uh, and then on the, the next day, we had our Clay County Solid Waste Meeting, um, I really don't have anything to add to that, other than the fact that they, I think they had one of the two doors replaced, and, um, one of them still wasn't, the electronic portion of it wasn't working, so they're having to open and close it by chains, uh, that was kind of, it's, it's been a, that's just been a nightmare, that thing, but there, hopefully, that's been resolved by now, Cory thought it would be. That same day then, and we had our MCC JPA meeting, which is the Moore Clay County Joint Powers Authority that deals with diversion issues, and we, uh, dealt with a couple of reimbursement requests from landowners, and we received our property acquisition status report, litigation update, and, um, we did approve farmland leases for 2025. And we did receive word that, um, the Buffalo Red River Watershed District has started their work process on, for the road raise for Georgetown, and the work for, um, in the Wolverton area, that they've, I maybe I reported on that before, but. And then lastly, yesterday, we had our West Central Regional Water Meeting in Halsted, um, probably where the most time spent was talking about the finances and funding and, uh, you know, future, uh, potential places for money, but the $300,000 that, the three counties that allocated is pretty much gone now, and so we're still, now it's been suggested that we could end up needing another four to $500,000 just to complete the planning process through the courts. Originally, it was suggested that that 300 would do that, so, but it's, hasn't worked out that way. So, um, you know, unless Frank has more to add to that, um, that's the end of my reports, and I just want to, I, I didn't have a written-down thing like Jenny did for Frank, but.
Could you make me cry?
Frank, for twelve years, um, uh, you've been a real asset to this board, and you and I have worked on several committees together, and I, you know, I think we've had some positive results coming out of those committees that move forward. Um, there was a couple of deals on, that were put out on social media that, that, uh, talked about your open house that was held yesterday, and I, I apologize, I couldn't be there, um, but one of the comments that, uh, the, well, somebody from the public had raised on there, and it was probably the simple, most worthy statements that could be said about Frank, and that just said, he's a good, common-sense guy, and there's, there's nothing, nothing better, uh, that, I don't think there can be a better type of a accolade than that, than to, um, be told that you're a common-sense person, which you really are, thank, and I want to thank you, Frank, for your many years of service to Clay County, and I've enjoyed, enjoyed working with you.
Thank you for your guidance, Kevin, you've helped me a lot.
Okay. That concludes my report.
Thank you. On, uh, let's see, on the seventeenth, it seemed like a long time ago, we had the PIC Committee Meeting, which addressed, we addressed those issues today, um, on the eighteenth, I attended the, uh, the Clay County Leaders Round, uh, Roundtable that the chamber sponsored, um, just basically looking at legislative priorities for the region, some strategic planning that they're, they're engaged in, had, had local legislators there, did a, a great job of, uh, addressing our issues and addressing, uh, giving us an update on what their activities have been. Um, the roundtable discussion was a lot of, a good presence of community leaders and businesses there, and then they discussed the Moorhead Area Day at the Capitol, uh, that'd be coming up during this session. On the eighteenth, I attended, virtually attended the Northwest Emergency Community On the eighteenth, I attended, virtually attended the Northwest Emergency Communication Board. There was some discussion on Next Generation 911, the Northwest Remote Dispatch Grant that's out there, and looking at Armor ID for Customs and Border Patrol, Essentia Health, and some of the multi-line phone legislation that's coming up, so that when people with multi-line phones call 911, their actual address shows up. On the, later that day, I attended the substance abuse, no, I'm sorry, on the nineteenth, I attended the Clay County Substance Abuse and Suicide Prevention Committee Meeting. Annabelle Default and Karen Nitskorsky did a real good job of bringing us up speed on some of the issues that had been around developing bylaws and new structure for the committee. Jason McCoy gave us a tobacco ordinance update, and Rory Beal gave a cannabis and substance abuse grant overview for us. And later that day, we had the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Board Meeting, and congratulations to Mayor Dartis of West Fargo. He'll be our chair next year, and Ryan Nelson of the Clay County, of the Morehead City Council will be the vice chair. We had a couple of issues, a couple of issues of business. One was approving, or authorizing the city of Fargo to move forward with seeking bids on the fiber optic work that needs to be done with the new dispatch center. That is coming in at a north of $200,000. We did have a vote to authorize them to go ahead and let the bids, and it will be part of the cost of building the Triple R D C. And then, of course, we had the election for new officers. And later, later that day, attended the diversion authority meeting, and that was covered by Commissioner Campbell. And I want to, then, yesterday, I attended Commissioner Gross's open house. I want to thank you, Frank. We've, we've only worked together the four years I've been here, but you've had a life of service to this country and this community, starting with when, I guess, you were just a pup, serving in the US military and coming through. We were lucky to get you as a capstone of the work you did in this area in a lot of capacities, for local sports, for the Dilworth City Council, and you've come in here and you've been an inspiration to people for 12 years. And I've come in, you, you deal with compassion, you're a straight shooter, we know where you stand, and you deal with things on a very ethical level, and that's important in these days. So you've been, you've been a great inspiration to everybody here. And with that, I'm going to turn the gavel over to you and let you give your report, and then you can gavel this meeting shut.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gross, I have, if I could, before you say your final words, I have an additional person who, who wanted to be here yesterday and today, but wasn't unable to be here, and so I have somebody that wants to also say a few kind words here, and so, are, are you there?
I, I am, Steve. Can you hear me?
We can hear you great, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Well, good, good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
I feel like I should stand up and, and salute you folks, but I, I, I just wanted to take a minute there to, to congratulate Commissioner Gross on what a great career as a commissioner. I, it was just so much fun working with him and for him. Always so positive and, and so willing to do the right thing. It just, you don't find those people every day, and it's, it's really fortunate to have that opportunity to work for him and with him. So Frank, I just really wish you well in your future endeavors in retirement. You've done so much for your community that I just wanted to call and congratulate you today.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Steve, I can just, I could barely hear him.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you very much. Thank you for calling there, Brian. You were great. You were great to work for.
Well, Frank, I just wish you well. I, I can hardly hear you there, so just thank you for this opportunity to, to call in and congratulate you. I mean that to the, the chairperson there, and, and I'm not sure who it is right now, so.
It's Dave.
Oh, yes, okay. Okay. Well, you folks have a great day and just celebrate, celebrate Frank's going, going off the commission. That's, it's just, it's a great time, so thank you very much. Or happy to hear it all of you.
Okay. Thank you for calling, Brian.
Okay, yeah, bye now.
Tough to act if, how are you guys? And I don't know if I can do it or not, but my meetings were taken care of. It's just, I was at PIC and with the water district, and we covered all those stuff today. Last Thursday, I don't know if you're listening to KFC or not, but I had about a 10, 15-minute segment with Ben Hanson. We covered flavoring, flavored vaping stuff and cigarettes, so that was fun doing that. Past 12 years, I had. I got myself together here. I made so many good friends. I'm sorry, I'll get a scalyer. Oh, you guys, it's just been great to work for. All I can say is goodbye, thank you. And with that, we're turned.